Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, December 15th. A few minutes after seven, we're gonna have a regular board trustees meeting. We'll stand to pledge allegiance and give the meeting started. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. We'd like to honor a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Give a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McQuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Okay, so we view an approval of part of meeting minutes. We're gonna talk about that now, as I did that last time, and something about getting out of order. So, we need to get all the minutes done. We talked about the work session. I stated in numerous meetings, I have an estimate of forty-five hours of meeting minutes. That was roughly the middle of November, for three thousand one hundred and thirty-three hours. I would like to go ahead and keep going on that, get all the long minutes. I'll send them all the minutes I have, and go from there. I did have a question, Steve. In the meeting, last meeting, you stated that Clay Township, you guys do it half short and half long. I looked at every meeting online, and you said you made the decision first of the year. I looked up, I didn't see any of them that were done a long version. When we look at that?
Let me clarify, when we have a certain serious situation like a hearing in the middle of the meeting, it's word by word. If it's a contractual thing, it's word by word. It's when the topic comes up.
So, it's not like half, because you stated, I thought you stated it was half the meetings?
If I did, if I didn't expand all the way it is. You just asked me off the cuff, and I gave you an answer, but it's only when we have to have those particular word by words that you do that. And there's a lot of times that happens, when you have contractual decisions or anything that's legal, you need to go word by word. So, it's an option, you can float back and forth. But I also realize that it's up to the fiscal officer to make that decision, because our fiscal officer does our minutes.
Okay, so, do we want to make a motion to go ahead and proceed on with go transcript and have them make our minutes, since the board already decided, in meeting I wasn't here, to do word for word? We gotta do word for word, because that's what was said. Ready to go ahead and proceed with that, Jim?
No.
No?
Mr. Mann needs to be in on this decision, because it impacts us all.
He stated in the last meeting that he wants, that he knows we need to get the meeting out, the meeting minutes out there. He was not negative on it at all, he was wanting to get it done. So, you're not, you don't want to go on with this then, right?
Do you want to farm it out through, I'm okay with that, but I'm not...
Farm it out to who?
To who's been doing our minutes? Tracy, who's that lady?
Again, it's Lampke Court recording, her name was Darlene Anthony.
And we already said that she did several months of meetings for the price that we're doing all year for. It's three or four times the price.
Have you heard anything about this company? So...
Negative, 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 anything not to do with Jim? Old business, resolution adopting the 2021 permanent budget. Well, I guess we can't pass this resolution, you do, the board's not here, he needs to vote on it.
What's the resolution? What number are we on?
It was tabled for last year, last meeting.
It was, but it was 114, but I made an error, and 113 wasn't where we should have started. So, I had to move our 113 to 114, so this will start at 117.
Okay, new business.
Twenty, twenty, twenty dash 117.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt resolution number twenty dash 117. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby adopt the 2021 Permanent Budget for all departments as presented.
You're not gonna be a second.
Hmm?
You're not gonna be a second.
So, we're not gonna have a budget. That means you're gonna shut down payroll. And that means it's gonna be an emergency meeting, that Mr. Mann may or may not decide to show up to because of the COVID information. So, as long as you understand that going into that, Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, I have a code, I mean...
You've got four days to rip apart this budget.
What days I was given to it here at the beginning of, I was given this paperwork beginning of the meeting.
You were given the budget last week.
Not when the changes that...
You stipulated that you wanted it four days before the meeting, so that you could pick it apart and go over it. Fire Department had forty-one changes in their budget last year. This thing's not gonna be perfect, and we have enough to move forward with it. It's your call, so when payroll gets interrupted, or we need an emergency meeting, that's on you.
Okay, so, new business. There is nothing. Fiscal Officer, report, please, Tracy.
You need to read into the record, you didn't get a second on that motion.
I said, I said, there's no second on that. Fiscal Officer, report, please.
Okay, in your packet, I provided you the report, appropriation person, and the spine summary. I also provided you appropriation letter of the coronavirus, ledger of the coronavirus fund line item, item, fund item, no, item, line item, I will just do a line item. Coronavirus is the fund two-two-seven-two, this is the line item, that all the POs that you guys approved are coming out of. As you can see, all the POs have been, by the way, if you haven't been up to the office, they're all, the rest of them are in, all of them are too, are in the box to be signed. You signed some of them, and there's some more in there. I think we went from three oh-four to three seventeen, but there was other POs in between that. You can see those POs listed, where it says PO slash B C, you can see the PO numbers, you can see the companies under vendor and payee. There's two vendors that still have, I haven't met, POs for one, that's TCL, and the other is Lowe's. And if you see at the bottom of the list, on the on the timber balance, we only have twenty-four thousand, I don't have my glasses on, nine hundred and something, nine fifty-eight twenty-four, that's all we have left in this fund. Again, we have TCL and Lowe's, which I think add up to about thirty-some thousand dollars or more.
Wow.
So, what I'm telling you is, somehow the calculations didn't come out. If you looked at those, everything is valid in there. You guys signed the POs and everything, so everything is valid.
I have a, can I interrupt for a minute, Tracy? All right, so the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, the tenth line down...
One from the top?
From the top.
Which column?
Thirty-seven, four, eight, nine, the process ID for John Deere Financial, that...
I backed it up, there's a minus. If you go down farther, there is a minus.
Okay, all right.
See it, do you see the minus?
I see it there now. Okay, that corrects that issue. The trustees approved by resolution only so many for CARES Act, so there should not be anything else in this sheet that would be outside of what they approved and signed. And so, the numbers that were approved and signed were inside the three hundred, the three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar mark. So, we're gonna have to take this apart and figure out why.
The initial amount...
It's short.
The initial amount you have in your budget was three twenty-two. Okay, and this three twenty-four is because, remember at the end, they said if everybody turns in their money, that we would get some more, well, we got like two thousand more dollars. So, your initial seems to be three twenty-two, ninety-six point seventy something, and you got two thousand and fifty-three thousand and seventy-three cents. That's what brought up the three twenty-four, but you didn't calculate your numbers on the three twenty-four. You calculated your numbers on the three twenty-two. But the trustees signed, they have to sign, before I can write any PO, they have, I get it approved, they have to sign everything. So, they've signed every PO on this list. I take that back, except for the newer ones farther down the list, that just are on the third, started on the twelfth, they're still sitting in the mailbox. But they've signed every one of those other ones. You have to sign the PO out of U A N, so when they sign those, that makes it, even though you had them sign those papers at the meeting, they have signed it officially, and I have it in the records, they signed everything. Except again, since the tenth, the tenth.
Trustees, I would like to go through this list after tonight and be able to identify every one of these purchases, because it doesn't seem correct in terms of the purchases you authorized in that meeting. There were purchases made prior to that meeting, and you had done a resolution for thirty thousand dollars, but it did not identify what could be bought under that thirty thousand. So, you did not authorize a line item by line item like you did in that meeting. So, you have to follow what you authorized and the dollar figure that you authorized for it. And those numbers that you authorized were under three hundred and twenty-four thousand. It was a, there was a credit, you know, a credit that left over unexpensed, so I don't, I don't know why this report is reflecting that there's not enough money to take care of the last final POs.
Well, when you approved, just for your, for your knowledge as well, when you approved the thirty thousand, that money started being spent, and bills were paid, and then you came back and came up with the other ones. You cannot take the, you can't, you already signed those, you cannot take those back.
They didn't, the trustees did not vote in a meeting on line item by line item what was supposed to be spent in that thirty thousand.
I'm just saying, you wrote a PO, you signed, you signed the PO for a resolution for the coronavirus. The payments went out for those. How can you take those payments back? They've already been paid.
Because they weren't authorized individually, and that's when, in our public fire chief about that as well. The trustees have to be able to vote on those expenditures.
They did vote, they voted on the resolution.
They did write the line items.
The charges went, and they signed the POs. That's the process.
But POs for thirty thousand blanket, but it wasn't for individual purchases. This is federal money that requires a line item.
It does not require to have to be individual purchase, it does require to be, meet the guideline of the coronavirus act. You're making up rules that does not say. You're telling them something that's not true, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, I'm not here to argue. Trustees, you've signed POs, and you're stuck with the POs regardless, and that has to be for what you voted on, by line item. You did not sign anything that shows line item for whatever was spent in the original thirty thousand.
I have a record that they signed them. I have record their signatures on POs that they signed them, Mr. Wolf. I'm not arguing, I'm just taking, stating the facts.
So, I ask that you table this until we have a chance to go through it.
Well, I'm not, there's nothing to vote on this, I'm just pointing this out as part of my, that this paper's available, and also, the POs are available in my office if you need copies of them. This is just part of my report. I'm not asking them to vote on anything. I'm just presenting this as some data for you to have as related to the coronavirus. There's no vote required there. It's this data, I wanted you to be aware of. Also, I want, Mr. McLaughlin, Trustee McLaughlin, in your folder, there's a document. You approved a resolution for the Ohio DAS. You should have three documents in there. Mr. Wolf, would you be the one that's making these purchases?
No, the trustees approved the cooperative purchases, they're joining the DAS for one hundred dollars, and the CARES, or Sourcewell Competitive Bidding Program, and the invoice for that was put into the invoices here last week and sent to the fiscal officer. That puts us in the state bid program. Correct, we have to have that. Or we pay retail for everything. Correct. Or we don't have, or we have to put everything out. And we also get in the legal trouble, because we told people we were on state bid and were not certified of such. Which causes a problem for the chief's car that... Yes, the chief's car that's already... That thing over there, okay, so that cleans up the problem with the chief's car, so you don't want to pay that?
I don't understand what you're saying. I mean, I missed something in the conversation. I'm just trying, you don't have the document in your folder?
No.
I'm just trying to...
What is the document, Tracy?
It's Ohio, what's it called again, corporate, Ohio DAS.
Yes.
I saw the email, it was originally addressed to Lynn Roberts or something, is that the document you're talking about? Is that different? No, that's different.
So, what, now I'm confused, what's the Sourcewell, and what did you give me on that?
The resolution passed by trustees was that they joined DAS for one hundred dollars fee, and renewed their, their membership in Sourcewell that had no annual fee.
A hundred dollars?
A hundred dollars at DAS.
Yeah, but I don't, so I don't have anything for Sourcewell.
Sourcewell has no price.
No, did I suppose it's still an application?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. McLaughlin, Trustee McLaughlin should have the documentation on that for DAS.
I do.
You paid the bill, they sent that documentation. There's three, there's three pieces of material there, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you want that, Mr. Wolf? Do you want a copy of that? Do you need a copy of it?
I don't really need a copy, except I, it'd be nice to have, so I know when the expiration date is and make sure we get the renewal any...
So, Mr. McLaughlin, do you want to keep that or give it to Mr. Wolf?
Yes, I want, yes, I want to keep this.
Okay, so, I guess I have to email you a copy, Mr. Wolf.
That'd be great. And I don't have a problem. Because when you buy something, when you buy something under state bid, they want to see that you are a member, and you have to show them your certificate. Which this department, this township had told people they'd done purchases on state bid in the past, and we were not a member. So, I worked with the state off the DAS office and their legal firm to figure out how to fix it. By joining now and a hundred dollars, they will resolve the past.
You don't even want to email copy, Jim? Jim, you don't want to email copy?
You'd send me an email?
You want to email copy? And you want to email too, as well?
Yes.
So, I should probably now to all the trustees.
So, can we go back to CARES Act for a minute, since we were talking about that, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay. We have two remaining, two remaining line items that the trustees approved to be purchased or serviced to be received. One is the company called, the cleaning company.
TCL.
TCL.
Very good.
All right, so, because of the delay of not getting this done, or at least that, we have a two thousand dollar bill for the cleaning of this fire station last Tuesday, or Wednesday, because of the coronavirus that hit our firefighters, and they're not here anymore. So, the building would be disaffected and cleaned. If the PO would have been issued for TCL, then that cost would have been under the one year contract. Because it is not, we owe a two thousand dollar bill regardless of whether you move forward with TCL or not. On the current report here, it does not have TCL listed, but they needed a W nine, and then I gave one to them, and to Tracy, and it said it was two years old and one good enough, so we sent another one, and we, she now has an updated one. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, when you see bills that have to be paid by TCL separate from what could be the contract.
Two grand, you said?
Two grand, so if we get another spike before the end of the year, we're gonna have to clean the building again. And that's gonna be a separate cost if there's no PO issued for TCL. The second issue is, I have no way of paying or buying the amount that trustees signed to be authorized to remodel the bathrooms, the showers, and the cleaning areas of Station sixty-two for the road department, who has an unclean fit facility. When they clean up trash, it's got COVID stuff, we're told all day, COVID is in the junk that they're picking up. We need to clean that up, so we authorized eight thousand dollars to be done at Lowe's. There's a Calvert-Lowe's, that's Township by, Jefferson Township, not Fire, not Road, it's one tax ID. I was there again today. It's a fourteen thousand dollar limit. But there, and I asked Tracy for a credit card last Thursday with the fire chief with me, and she couldn't, said there wasn't any. But I want to know, how am I gonna pay for this? Because I asked, you signed the PO to go to Lowe's and buy it, but Tracy suggests we open another account, which they can't do right away. It's gonna be a delay, and I'm afraid it's gonna last to the end of the year, and we're not gonna be able to do that project.
Lowe's won't accept, I talked to Lowe's, Lowe's will not accept a check, we have to open an account, or we have to have some kind of account there with them, whether it's credit card or whatever, but they will not accept a check.
Correct, we talked about that. So, my point to you trustees is, there's a fourteen thousand dollar account under our tax ID number, with a bunch of names that people don't work here anymore. And there is a credit card issued to one of the fire department people. Can we go get that credit card and use it for that eight thousand, so we can get this project rolling before the end of the year? In other words, do you want to empower our employees to do stuff in-house, or should we contract it out and spend all night? That is a good point. Our road department's giving a hundred percent of their own labor to do this, and I have no way of acquiring that eight thousand dollars and following through on your resolution without some help.
What resolution?
The resolution they passed to make the expenditures.
I signed that?
No, you did not, but you were here. You passed two to the... So, the people that support you in your community's saying that you don't want to give them the money to do a project in-house, is that what you're saying, Mr. McLaughlin? You're not on board with it?
What are you saying?
Are you on board with giving these guys the money to do this project or not?
You, you're drawing a picture that's totally not true of what's being done here. This eight thousand dollars is COVID money?
Yes.
Okay, you guys signed the COVID POs.
Okay, now he needs a way to do the purchase. So, we've got fourteen thousand dollar line of credit. This man needs approval from us to do it.
We also don't have money in COVID in the code either. That's why I brought that up, because you guys gotta make a decision of what you're gonna do.
We have a, we have a bathroom with a root brush?
It's not COVID, it's not updated for COVID. Mr. Mann's very upset that you can't wash your hands there and eat your lunch, because we only have one toilet in the road office. Again, again, this is not debatable, because the trustees voted to do this. You gotta carry it out. So, how do we carry it out?
And I didn't vote on it, you, you, getting Mr. Mann to help you.
So, you want to discriminate against this...
I'm not discriminating, again, I didn't vote on it. You're not, you're making a picture like you normally do, of something that's not true of what's going on. I didn't vote on that resolution, I did not sign that resolution, I'm not, I'm not, you're trying to make me look bad on this, I had nothing to do with that.
So, try to get past your disagreements, Mann, I want to ask a question.
And then we have Tracy tell us that we would extend it on the COVID money, that we might have to take money out of our own funding.
That hasn't, that hasn't been accurately proved yet, and I've asked for that to be...
So, we need to hold off on this until we decide what's going on, until we decide if we have it or not.
All right, so, I'd like to know, I was told by Tracy that she doesn't have any control over that Lowe's account. So, my question is, if we went charged on the credit card, which is a township card, not a fire department card, and we charged, what's gonna happen if that gets shut off?
If the credit card gets shut off? How will it get shut off?
You've shut off other cards before?
I don't have any control over, I don't have any, I didn't have any knowledge of that account being open.
You do, because you pay the bills when they come in.
I didn't have knowledge of when it was open, all I know is I paid the bill.
I can understand that, I can understand what you're saying, but you knew the account existed.
I do know that it existed, but I have no knowledge of cards or anything, I don't know if it's a account, all I know is what Lowe's told me, they didn't tell me anything about a card. But my thing is, is whether you charge in that account, where are you gonna take it, what fund are you gonna take it out of, that has to be decided. You can charge all day, but if you don't have a fund, you can charge forever, but if you don't have money, that's just like saying, I'm gonna charge on the credit card, I don't have money to pay for.
Again, trustees, I go back to what you voted on that's on record, of individual line item purchases, and not anything prior that was not authorized. You did sign POs for things to be paid for, but the former fire chief did not have a line item approval on every item that was bought. I want to go through this list to make sure it matches what you legislatively passed. But we also have carryover money from the road, and we have money in next year's budget, we can move around to cover it. So, we've got it covered three ways.
But I'm just saying, you have to make the decision.
Mr. McLaughlin still wants to stand in the way of the project.
I'm not standing in the way of it, I didn't vote on it. You're trying to make something out of nothing that didn't happen, I did not vote on it, you voted on it.
So, I'm asking the trustees, how do we proceed?
That's what I asked.
To fulfill the legislation.
That was my, first of all, we're still doing fiscal officer's report, did you guys vote in there yet? And secondly, that was my question, is what do we do about this? We have to do it, and that was my point of bringing that up, is somebody has to make a decision. If this is inaccurate, somebody has to make a decision to make it correct. That was my whole point. I mean, I understand what Jim is saying, I agree with Jim. The end result of this all is, somebody made a decision and did not ask me anything or keep me aware as I... or keep me aware, as I am the fiscal officer, of what you guys were planning on doing. I just do, I just followed the steps of how this goes. If this says coronavirus, I take it out coronavirus. The trustees signed and approved it. We kept going. We had a resolution at the time. Somebody made a resolution, a decision, a resolution was no good, but nobody rescinded that resolution. It's still sitting there. Whether it was inaccurate or not, it has not been rescinded. I'm just stating facts. I'm not trying to argue. It has to be, I'm just giving you facts to make the decision on what you want to do from here. I again agree with Jim on we have money to do this project, whether it's coronavirus or other road fund. You know, if they want that done, we do it. We get some money on coronavirus, and we get some money out of the road fund to get that done. My suggestion, I'm sorry, my suggestion.
Well, I didn't I wasn't here for the meeting, this meeting. I was in the hospital when they signed this. But I do have a question on these POs you signed. So there's three of them that have the same purpose. Zola Medical Preparation, open purchase, touchless products and whatever, twenty thousand, ninety dollars. Delia Electric, open purchase, touchless products and nineteen hundred thirty-five. So you think that would be electric switches? Zola Medical?
So it doesn't print everything, the purpose, everything I want. It only put part of the purchase on the purpose on there.
Okay, and then the one that kind of I got a question about CG Construction. They're an estimating company. Open purchase, touchless products and forty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars. What is CG doing for touchless stuff, forty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars?
My understanding is that's the remodeling of my understanding, that's the remodeling of fifty-nine. And what I was told is CG is the, I don't know the word, the overseer, is that it?
The general contractor?
Yes. And they are they doing are they do are they doing the work? Somebody told me that they were doing the work.
I don't know. That's interesting.
Because of the guy who they had originally, did the.
Okay. Makes me think of one word.
Because he was originally Billbury. It was originally Billbury. That's what.
No, that was just one quote.
But that was on the that was on the original thing that was sent out. I have in my records, and then they get changed to CG Construction. If you go, I have all this in my records if you want to.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Look at my records. I can show you. I have all the paperwork. In fact, it's included with the resolution, each of the POs. I put all that stuff in there. And I also have what I call a notebook, the coronavirus bible, where I'm keeping track of everything.
I saw that.
Yeah, I'm keeping track of everything because when the government comes in, they want it all in one place.